Okay, we can start. They will move it up with the timer.
I declare the tenth emergency special session of the General Assembly resumed, and call to order is fifty-third plenary meeting. Members will recall that in paragraph nine of its resolution, ES-10, slide twenty-three of tenth May, 2024, the Assembly decided to adjourn the tenth emergency special session temporarily and to authorize the President of the General Assembly at its most recent session to resume its meeting upon request from member states. In this regard, I should like to draw the attention of the delegations to document A/ES-10/1009, which contains a letter dated nine September, 2024, from the permanent representatives of Syria, of the Syrian Arab Republic, Mauritania, and Uganda in their respective capacities as chairs of the Arab Group, the Organization of the Islamic Cooperation Group, and the Coordinating Bureau of the Non-Aligned Movement, requesting the resumption of the tenth emergency special session of the General Assembly. I intend to conduct the proceedings of this meeting in accordance with the rules of procedure of the General Assembly and the past practices of its emergency special sessions. In accordance with rule sixty-three of the Rules of Procedure of the General Assembly, the President and Vice Presidents of the Seventy-Ninth Session shall serve in the same capacity at the resumed tenth emergency special session. Turning to the credentials committee, may I take it that it is the wish of the General Assembly to decide that the credentials committee of the Seventy-Ninth Session should serve for the resumed tenth emergency special session? It is so decided. In keeping with established practice, I should now like to invite the attention of the General Assembly to document A/ES-10/1010 concerning member states that are in arrears in the payment of their financial contributions to the United Nations within the terms of Article nineteen of the Charter. May I take it that the Assembly duly takes note of the information contained in this document? It is so decided. The General Assembly will now resume its consideration of agenda item five entitled, and I quote, "illegal Israeli actions in occupied East Jerusalem and the rest of the occupied Palestinian territory", end of quote. In connection with this item, the Assembly has before it a draft resolution issued as document Excellencies, distinguished delegates, ladies and gentlemen, we are meeting today in the context of the International Court of Justice's advisory opinion on the legal consequences of Israel's policies and practices in the occupied Palestinian territory, including East Jerusalem. The advisory opinion is in pursuance of General Assembly Resolution A/RES-77, Slide 247, adopted in this very hall. In the terms of the court, it is incumbent upon the United Nations, particularly this Assembly and the Security Council, to consider the precise modalities and further action required to bring to an end as rapidly as possible the unlawful presence of the State of Israel in the occupied Palestinian territory. It is, of course, at the discretion of the General Assembly, where every member state has an equal voice and vote to decide how to respond. This resumed tenth emergency special session is therefore a moment for reflection and dialogue. It is a moment to find a durable solution to the age-old Palestinian problem. As President of the General Assembly, who has vowed to serve with unyielding dedication to the Charter and the principles of the United Nations, it is, however, my duty to stress that international law, the Charter of the United Nations, and UN resolutions must be respected by all member states. Without prejudging the outcome of this special session, it is our collective duty as representatives of the international community to ensure that the principles of justice and the rule of law prevail. For without justice and the rule of law, Israelis and Palestinians alike will not attain what they long for most: peace and security. In our deliberations, we must not lose sight of the many lives lost, the staggering humanitarian challenges and infrastructural destruction that continue to take place, particularly in Gaza in the past several months. I hope our gathering here will make a positive difference in the lives of the many who continue to suffer in this region and who look up to us to make the right decisions at this emergency special session. Thank you. I now give the floor to the observer of the observer state of Palestine to introduce draft the resolution
Mr. President, I congratulate you for the assumptions of the presidency of the Seventy-Ninth Session. Mr. President and colleagues, Palestine is an important part of universal history, and the Palestinian people is an integral part of humanity. Neither our country nor our people will disappear. But that is no excuse for ignoring the existential threat they are facing. Palestinians have carved in a reality of suffering and oppression spaces of joy and accomplishment. Their spirit has remained free, even while they were in shackles. They have preserved hope when everything around them should have led them to despair. They have been true to their identity regardless of the price they had to pay. They have been steadfast in the purest of their inalienable rights, just like all other peoples. Mr. President, the Palestinians want to live, not survive. They want to be safe in their homes. They want their children to go to school without fear. They want to be free in reality as they are in spirit: free to live, to come and go, free to determine their own fate, subject only to God and to no other. They want to be to be Palestinians, to be themselves, just be, neither heroes nor victims, just human beings with the simplest of dreams or the greatest of aspirations, living in dignity, in peace and security in their homeland. The Palestinian people is an extraordinary people whose true desire is to lead an ordinary life. Palestinians want to live and thrive in their ancestral land, where the spirit of their forefathers and foremothers embraces them, where the suspended tales of their lives await to be resumed. Palestinians want for children to be buried their parents after a long and beautiful life, rather than for parents to bury their children before they could know the meaning of life. Palestinian children do not need to grow through the lessons of terrifying pain. The lessons of life should suffice. Now the sky is full of children whose life was taken away way too soon and in the cruelest of ways. And the death and the earth is full with children who have suffered, who were injured, paralyzed, orphaned, and traumatized. Mr. President, as we speak in these halls, coming together yet again to address this grave historic injustice, two million people are being besieged, bombed, starved. They are being displaced over and over again with no safe haven anywhere, with death awaiting them everywhere. How many more Palestinians need to be killed before change finally takes place to stop this in humanity? How many more Palestinians need to be violently displaced by the repeated attacks of Israeli settlers and occupation forces? How many more Palestinians need to be snatched in the middle of the night and thrown into an Israeli jail for years and years? Childhoods lost, lives ruined. How much more denial of rights, dispossession, and destruction will it take for the world to finally not only react but act? Until the world not only takes a stance but takes a stand and firmly acts upon it, truly upholding the rule of law and human rights? Mr. President, the General Assembly requested from the International Court of Justice its authoritative opinion on the Israeli occupation, and the Court upheld its mandate. Allow me to quote the Court, and I quote: "The sustained abuse by Israel of its position as an occupying power through annexation and an assertion of permanent control over the occupied Palestinian territory and continued frustration of the right of the Palestinian people to self-determinations violates fundamental principles of international law and renders Israelis' presence in the occupied Palestinian territory unlawful." Unlawful, end of quotation. If we need to identify two cardinal rules, two pillars in which the international law-based order was built, there would be the right of peoples to self-determination and the prohibition of the acquisition of territory by force. And these are the rules that Israel has been breaching openly and brazenly for decades without consequences. The Court fulfilled its mandate by unequivocally identifying the legal consequences for Israel, all states and the United Nations, and by placing them before the General Assembly, the Security Council, and all states to take the necessary measures to ensure compliance with international law. This was a historic opinion. Let me repeat. This was a historic opinion as this was the first time the Court examined the Israeli occupation as a whole. Now that the Court has answered the request, it is time for the General Assembly to uphold its mandate and for all states to uphold their own obligations to ensure Israel compliance with its own in the face of its blatant non-compliance and relentless breaches. The Court's advisory opinion showed that there is no doubt about the facts or the law. But the law is not there to merely serve as a measuring stick of violations. It is there to prevent those violations, and when that does not work, it is there to punish them, to bring them to a halt, to ensure accountability, to ensure justice. Unchecked and deterred Israeli impunity will only mean more and more Palestinians killed, maimed, detained, more destruction, more loss, more misery. It must be brought to an end. Only then can we expect a genuine change that could lead to peace and to the implementation of the two-state solution. Mr. President, a few voices have claimed that departure from the law or its abandonment was the only realistic way forward. But it is precisely the departure from the law or its breach without any consequence that led us here in the first place. No occupying power can have a veto right over the inalienable rights of the people under its occupation. Let me repeat. No occupying power can have a veto over a veto right over the inalienable rights of the people under its occupation. Those who think the Palestinian people will accept a life of servitude, a life of apartheid, are the ones who are not being realistic. Those who imagine the Palestinian people will disappear or surrender are the ones who are not being realistic. Those who claim that peace is possible in our region without a just resolution for the question of Palestine are the ones who are not being realistic. A few voices claim this is not the right time for such an act, such action. They always find good reasons to keep doing the wrong thing. But delayed justice is denied justice. The right time to do the right thing is always right now. The right time to do the right thing is always right now. While looking at a map, or worse, looking at the horrific situation on the ground, the matter may look inextricable, but the solution is right before our eyes. It is the one endorsed by the international community as a whole and enshrined in numerous United Nations resolutions. It is an independent and sovereign state of Palestine on the nineteen-sixty-seven borders, with East Jerusalem as its capital, living side by side in peace and security with Israel. So why are we allowing the destruction of the State of Palestine and of this solution when we know there is no viable alternative and we all understand the risk of an all-out conflagration? What is happening in Gaza today can be the last chapter of the tragedy endured by the Palestinian people or will be the first chapter of an even more tragedy, tragic reality for our region as a whole. What you do next matters. Act now to stop the killing, to stop the suffering, to stop these crimes, to stop this injustice. Mr. President, I have the honor to introduce the draft resolution under consideration in this emergency special session. This is the first time since we've received additional rights and privileges through resolutions that you have adopted. I am so honored to do that for the first time in the General Assembly. I am so tall, I go beyond the ceiling of this General Assembly. This emergency special session is entitled, and I quote, "Advisory opinion of the International Court of Justice on the legal consequences arising from Israelis' policies and practices in the occupied Palestinian territory, including East Jerusalem and from the illegality of Israelis' continued presence in the occupied Palestinian territory", end of quotation. As contained in document I want to thank more than the forty countries so far that have co-sponsored the draft resolution. The draft resolution faithfully reflects the advisory opinion of the ICJ, the principal judicial organ of the United Nations, and it is grounded in international law and aims at furthering respect for its rule for the Palestinian people but for the international community as a whole. We thank all delegations that engaged on this text and have done our utmost to address their concerns while ensuring the text remains aligned with the opinion rendered by the Court. The draft resolution in its preamble paragraphs reflects the determinations arrived at by the Court while focusing in its operative paragraphs on the obligations of Israel, all states and the United Nations and other international organizations in accordance with international law. It also calls for a number of individual and collective actions to uphold the law and implement the relevant United Nations resolutions on the question of Palestine. It seeks action for accountability, the fundamental path for justice in any case, and Palestine cannot be the exception. Mr. President, I stand on this podium at this historic and tragic juncture to tell the Palestinian people that a change is going to come, a change is going to come, that their faith is not endless suffering and agony, that freedom is their bright light and their destiny. I stand on this podium to tell you that justice is the only path to peace, to call on you, to call on all of you to uphold international law, not sacrifice it on the altar of cold and reckless political calculations. I call on you to reject double standards, to treat my people with the respect they deserve and to recognize the rights they are entitled to. We are not a people too many. We are not a problem. We are a nation that asks for nothing more than your nations but can accept nothing less. We want to live in freedom and sovereignty and dignity and peace and security in our ancestral land. We are committed We are committed to the rule of international law and to justice and lasting peace in our region. This requires ensuring that same rules apply to all. No bias, no double standards, no exceptionalism, and no exception. Each country has a vote, and the world is watching us to see if we can live up to the commitments we undertake and to the principles we claim as ours at this historic and crucial juncture for humankind. Please stand on the right side of history with international law, with freedom, with peace. The alternative is what you witness every day in your TV screens and what the Palestinian people are enduring in their flesh. A different reality is possible. It starts now and here. Free Palestine, peace for all, and I thank you.
I thank the observer of the observer state of Palestine. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Israel.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is my first time speaking here at the General Assembly after the October seven massacre. Eleven months ago, a terrorist army invaded southern Israel. In a single barbaric assault on a Jewish holiday, they murdered over a thousand of our citizens and carried out the most anal atrocities in modern history. Hundreds of vibrant young Israelis were murdered while celebrating life at a music festival. Hundreds of innocent people peacefully sleeping in their homes with their families were slaughtered. Some burned alive while holding their loved ones. And hundreds more were taken hostage, dragged into a captivity more brutal than anything anyone could ever imagine. Even now, as we speak, over one hundred thousand Israelis remain displaced within their own country, unable to return home due to the relentless rocket attacks from Hamas in the south and Hezbollah in the north. Perhaps you have forgotten, but we did not start this war, nor did we choose it. We are fighting a war forced upon us. We are fighting for our homes, our families, our future. We fight because we have no other choice. Yet, despite the cruelties we have faced, despite the unprecedented terror unleashed upon our people, this assembly remains silent. I was certain, certain that the first resolution that would be brought before you all would be the unanimous and equivocal condemnation of terror, the rape, the torture, the kidnappings that took place on that darkest of days. Yet, there has been no condemnation, no resolutions. Instead, we gather here to watch the Palestinians' UN circus, a circus where evil is righteous, war is peace, murder is justified, and terror is applauded. How dare you continue this tradition of passing one-sided resolutions against Israel without even pausing to consider what Israeli people have endured? Since October seven, this assembly has passed two resolutions on this matter. Yet, there had not been one word about Hamas and barely a word about hostages. Those who contribute to this circus are not simply bystanders. You are participants, enablers, collaborators. Every vote you cast in support of this circus fuels the violence and emboldens those who reject peace. This empty show is not just an insult to the victims of October seven, an insult to the hostages. It is an insult to the very fabric of this institution. You are not promoting today peace and justice. You are dancing to the tune of your ringmasters, the Palestinian Authority. Look at this picture. Look at it closely. Study it. That blood on the floor belonged to six beautiful human beings: Eden, Hirsch, Alex, Carmel, Ori, and Dalmog. That is their blood. Six innocent Israelis executed in cold blood after months of suffering in this tiny dirty tunnel where they couldn't even stand, hidden under a child's bedroom. Imagine that being your child, your spouse, your friend. Imagine them for a moment suffocating, starving, bleeding in a dark hole for months. If it were your child, your loved one, would you sit in silence? Would you pretend this was just another story? Or would you scream for justice? Let me say this clearly. Jewish blood is not cheap. The days when it could be spilled without consequence are over. The days when the Jewish people were at the mercy of tyrants are over. Never again will we stand by while our people are massacred. Never again will we depend on your mercy or your judgment to protect us. Thank God that today we can defend ourselves. Today we have the strength to protect our state. Today we have the resolve to secure our future. So instead of condemning Hamas's brutal murder of over twelve hundred Israelis, innocent men, women, and children, the assembly sits silently. In place of this most basic common sense action, this circus focuses on distractions. The process that all other countries usually follow has been abandoned. Where are the negotiations, the deliberations? You have allowed the Palestinians to become the ringmasters. And those who vote for this resolution are playing their part. This resolution distorts the flawed advisory opinion of the ICJ. It ignores the truth, twists the facts, and replaces reality with fiction. It ignores completely... I didn't hear Mr. Mansour mentioning Hamas for the last thirty minutes he spoke here. It ignores the Hamas terror attack of October seven, ignores Israel's legitimate security concerns, and seeks to remove Israel's ability to protect itself. From the beginning, we all know that this process was politicized. This was not a quest for legal clarity but a predetermined attempt to delegitimize Israel on the world stage. Let's call this for what it is. This resolution is diplomatic terrorism, using the tools of diplomacy not to build bridges but to destroy them. And what other member state is treated that way? The answer is simple: none. No other country is subjected to such relentless obsessive abuse. You know, it's not my first term here. I started my first term at the UN in 2015. Since then, there have been one hundred and fifty-five General Assembly resolutions condemning Israel. In the same period, there have been only eighty-eight resolutions condemning every other country combined, combined. Think about the last decade. Think about how many brutal regimes exist in the world. Think about the countless injustices. Yet, the only Jewish state, the only democracy in the Middle East has been condemned almost twice as much as the rest of the world combined. This is not about justice. It is about an attempt to destroy Israel through diplomatic terrorism. Make no mistake. Since October seven, the Palestinian Authority has not condemned the atrocities committed by Hamas. Not one word of condemnation from President Abbas, not one word from Prime Minister Mustafa, not one word from Riyadh Mansour. The Secretary-General of Fatah Central Committee called the October seven massacre "a defensive war full of epics and heroisms." One of the most high-ranking Palestinian officials calling the rape and murder of thousands of civilians epic and heroic. Are these our partners in peace? The PA have offered their unwavering support for Hamas, the world's most despicable terrorist organization. They are its diplomatic wing, its public face, their consiglierees. The Palestinians deserve better leadership. For decades, Hamas has spent its money digging terror tunnels, arming terrorists, and bringing ruin to its own people. Rather than building up Gaza, Hamas has obsessed over one thing: destroying Israel. While Hamas digs tunnels, the Palestinian Authority works above ground, attempting to isolate Israel internationally. There are two sides of the same coin: one attacking with rockets, the other with resolutions. The Palestinian Authority has rededicated itself to supporting the world's most vicious terrorist. This is not an entity seeking peace. It is a regime that glorifies murder while educating its people to do the same. They refuse to denounce the most horrific crimes. They celebrate the slaughter of civilians as a victory. And now, this body is considering rewarding that refusal, rewarding that evil. You are giving a false prize to false leadership. There is only one side in this conflict that promotes genocide. It is the one that promotes it publicly. Let us not forget. Hamas's own founding charter calls, and I quote, "for the extermination of all Jews." They proudly proclaim their intent, and I quote, "to wipe Israel off the map and hunt Jews wherever they can find them." Instead of condemning the killers, the ones who want to commit a genocide, this resolution condemns the victims. How dare they accuse us of the crimes they themselves are committed to carrying out? This resolution seeks to deflect blame for Hamas's own atrocities onto Israel, which is forced to defend itself. This resolution perfectly represents the priorities of the Palestinian Authority. It slanders Israel, ignores our right to defend our people, and seeks to isolate us. The PA has teamed up with the radicals in the region, posing a grave threat not just to Israel but to the entire Middle East. But instead of addressing these major threats, some of you support this resolution which demands that Israel tie its ends. History has shown time and time again that true progress only comes through direct dialogue. Israel has demonstrated this for decades. Wonderful, important peace treaties have been signed with Egypt, Jordan, with the United Arab Emirates, with Bahrain, Morocco. Inshallah, there will be many more in the near future. Trying to isolate and destroy Israel brings nothing but regression. This resolution doesn't move the region forward. It drags the region backward, delaying the hope for peace and advancement. I was here on this podium six years ago. I stood in this hall and proposed a resolution to condemn Hamas. But instead of taking action, the assembly chose to look the other way, allowing Hamas to continue its reign of terror. And now, we are all Israelis and Palestinians alike suffering the consequences of your inaction. Back then, you chose to support the circus over morality. And here we are again, the same circus, the same performances. But we all know what's really happening here. This is not about peace. This is not about international law. This is about fostering. In the circus of the UN, you can ignore the atrocities that took place on October seven. You can pass resolutions detached from reality. You can pretend you live on a different planet. But in the real world, outside these halls, we are doing the hard work. We are fighting terror. We are working to bring the hostages home. In the real world, there is justice and morality. In the real world, Israel will shape its own future, striving for both victory and peace. Israel will defend itself. We will not apologize for protecting our citizens. We will not stop until Hamas is dismantled, until every one of our hostages is returned, and until the terror that threatens our people is eliminated. Today, this assembly faces a choice. You can choose to stand, stand on the side of justice, on the side of peace, on the side of those who seek real solutions to the region's challenges, or you can indulge this circus, this charade, this political theater. Israel is ready to walk with the international community. We are ready to walk with those committed to real peace, real security, real progress. Israel will not walk with those who refuse to renounce violence and acknowledge Israel's right to exist. Whoever supports this resolution today should be ashamed of themselves. On the day when your civilians, your families, your loved ones are murdered, raped, and kidnapped, do not come to this assembly seeking justice, all you will find is silence.
I thank the distinguished representative of Israel. I now give the floor to His Excellency Paya Musylenka, Minister of International Relations and Cooperation of Namibia.
Mr. President, allow me to firstly congratulate you on your election as the president of the seventy-ninth session of the General Assembly. I also thank you for commencing your tenure by reconvening the tenth emergency special session on illegal Israeli actions in occupied East Jerusalem and the rest of the occupied Palestinian territory at the request of member states. This meeting takes place two months after the International Court of Justice rendered its seminal advisory opinion on the legal consequences arising from Israeli policies and practices in the occupied Palestinian territory, including East Jerusalem and for the illegality of Israel's continued presence in the occupied Palestinian territory. Namibia strongly supports and welcomes this advisory opinion, which we believe must be actioned through our collective effort to ensure it delivers for the people of Palestine. In convening this meeting, the General Assembly is, as rendered in the advisory opinion, able to consider precise modalities and further action to bring to an end as rapidly as possible the unlawful presence of Israel in the occupied Palestinian territory. The request for this August assembly to seek an advisory opinion from the ICJ was incurred in the fervent belief that the international judicial system can provide rational advice to assist us in to assist us in charting the way forward on the question of Palestine among the oldest unresolved agenda items for the General Assembly. Mr. President, the convening power of the General Assembly must continue to be used as a tool to effect meaningful change. As the world's most representative multilateral institution, the United Nations General Assembly continues to be an up platform for the articulation of the voices of all nations of the world. We declare unequivocally in this August forum that there is no substitute for peace, and therefore move that Israel should henceforth genuinely commit to ending its fifty-seven years occupation in line with ICJ advisory opinions, General Assembly and Security Council resolutions. We must work in unison, using all legitimate means at our disposal to halt Israel's non-compliance with international law. The resolution tabled before us in this Emergency Special Session is to be considered before an assembly that has repeatedly affirmed its strong support for the inalienable right of the Palestinian people to self-determination. The same assembly has also affirmed the right of the Palestinian people to statehood. It is incumbent on all member states to fulfill in good faith the obligations they have assumed in accordance with the UN Charter. Further, member states should take cognizance of the consequential nature of the ICJ advisory opinion, and that jointly and severally, member states and international organizations, including the UN, are ascribed honorless responsibilities. Primary among these responsibilities is the obligation not to recognize the unlawful presence of Israel in the occupied Palestinian territory, and moreover, not to render aid or assistance in maintaining the situation created by the continued presence of Israel in the occupied Palestinian territory. Mr. President, Namibia has cosponsored this resolution and will vote in its favor, out of the fervent belief that its adoption would signify the international community's steadfast commitment towards ending impunity and supporting the progress towards lasting peace in the Middle East. We believe in exuding responsibility and duty to humanity. Accordingly, we encourage similar cautionable action, cautionable action from all member states. The resolution provides the international community with another opportunity to take a unified position in reasserting the key tenets of international law. Further, it reasserts the primacy of self-determination as an inalienable right that is not subject to the conditions of the occupying power. The resolution also sends a strong message to the world, and most especially to the Security Council, on their desires of the majority of the international community. Council members cannot continue to use veto power to perpetuate injustice and support impunity, more so not at a time when the people of Palestine are ensnared by stalled ceasefire negotiations and a derailed peace process. While Council fails to execute its core responsibility of maintaining international peace and security, Gaza continues to be obliterated, offering no safe heavens for civilians and humanitarian personnel. Infrastructure, including medical facilities, continues to be destroyed viciously, demonstrating carelessness by the occupying power. Equally, the situation in the West Bank continues to deteriorate daily. This is particularly worrisome. The international system must offer more than mere words of solidarity to the people of Palestine. It is high time that tangible steps are taken to oblige Israel to end its atrocious attacks on the occupied Palestinian territory. In conclusion, Mr. President, Namibia will continue to tirelessly champion the cause for the total liberation of Palestine. We are pleased to see Palestine seated among the family of nations, and will continue to call for an immediate ceasefire in Gaza, the full membership of Palestine to the UN, and a renewed vision of a two-state solution that will enable the reconstruction of Gaza, leading to an independent Palestinian state, a safe Israel, and peace in the Middle East. I thank you.
I thank His Excellency Minister for International Relations and Cooperation of Namibia. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Cameroon, who will speak on behalf of the Organization of Islamic Cooperation.
Mr. President, I have the honor to deliver this statement on behalf of the group of member states belonging to the Organization of Islamic Cooperation in my capacity as the Chair of the group. Mr. President, let me begin by commending you for the resumption of the tenth Emergency Special Session. There is no doubt that the present editions of the session, which were dedicated to addressing the grave humanitarian condition in the occupied Palestinian territory, have achieved positive outcomes, given three landmark resolutions adopted by this August assembly since October 2023. The resolution on the need for an immediate ceasefire in Gaza and elsewhere in the occupied Palestinian territory, and global support for the admission of Palestine as a full-fledged member of the United Nations have justified the residual and complementary role of the United Nations General Assembly within the context of the maintenance of international peace and security. The group think that it is deeply regrettable that despite the hopeful expectation following the adoption of the Security Council Resolution twenty-seven, twenty-eight, on March twenty-five, two thousand twenty-four, calling for a ceasefire in Gaza, the human rights are humanitarian calamities in the occupied Palestinian territories have worsened. The death toll, predominantly women and children, has tragically reached an unprecedented number of forty-one thousand six hundred eighty. Additionally, over one thousand hundred five twenty-five people were injured, and hundreds of thousand were displaced, following the destruction of their homes, hospitals, and heritage and cultural sites. In view of foregoing and giving the grave threat to peace and security resulting from the long-drawn Middle East crisis, our group, for our group, it is high time that practical measure be taken to end Israel illegal occupation of Palestine. Accordingly, our group reiterate the call by the OIC on member states of the United Nations to exert diplomatic, political, and legal pressure, and take necessary deterrent measures to stop the crimes against humanity, war crimes, and ethnic cleansing committed by Israel, the occupying power on the occupied Palestinian territory and Gaza. In this connection, our group welcome and commend the objective of this Emergency Special Session to consider an urgent follow-up action on the advisory opinion of the International Court of Justice on the legal consequences arising from Israel policies and practices in the occupied Palestinian territory, including East Jerusalem, as well as the illegality of Israel's committed presence, continued presence at the occupied Palestinian territory. Similarly, Mr. President, our group reiterate the recent OIC resolution adopted at the fiftieth Council of Foreign Ministers held in Yaounde, Cameroon, on twenty-nine thirty August, two thousand twenty-four, welcoming the historical advisory opinion of the ICJ on illegal Israeli occupation of the occupied Palestinian territory, and the legal consequences for Israel, the United Nations, and third parties, specifically the ICJ, legal opinion, adopt, adjust the continued presence of the State of Israel on the occupied Palestinian territory to illegal dos affirming Israel's obligation to end the presence in the occupied Palestinian territory as rapidly as possible. Mr. President, the advisory opinion of the ICJ for our group, which will issue upon the request of this esteemed assembly, has determined the legal occupation of UN member states and international organizations with regard to the immediate implementation of the various provisions of the legal opinion by the principal judicial arm of the United Nations. Consequently, for our group, the draft resolution being presented today is properly anchored on the principle of international law as contained in relevant UN resolution and the judicial discrimination arising from the ICJ advisory opinion. It is therefore imperative to implement the ICJ advisory opinion on the illegal Israeli occupation of Palestine, including the assertion that Israel must end its unlawful presence, cease settlement activities, evacuate settlers, provide repression, and that state and international organization should not recognize or aid Israel illegal action on the occupied Palestinian territory. While commending this draft resolution for the overwhelming votes in favor, and adoption by member, by member pressure, and take necessary deterrent measure to stop the crimes against humanity, war crime, and ethnic cleansing committed by Israel, the occupying power on the occupied Palestinian territory. In this connection, in this connection, and in fact, the assembly, in accordance to our group, it is important to note that your anticipated positive action would provide the needed respect in this long-drawn crisis in Palestine. Without doubt, this resolution will also contribute to the end of the settler colonial occupation of Palestine, which has always been at the heart of the Palestine crisis. Indeed, the global consensus, as evident from the various UN resolution and relevant regional organization, is that the definitive peaceful settlement of the Israel-Palestine crisis resides in a two-state solution, the realization of the inalienable national right of the Palestinian people, and the establishment of an independent Palestine state on the ninety-sixty-seven borders, which is Jerusalem as its capital. Ultimately, the implementation of various UN resolution remains the responsibility of this global body, and all is peace-loving member. Finally, Mr. President, for our group, the adoption of the draft resolution in the run-up to the summit of the future represent a beacon of hope for the global transformation which we seek to realize in order to confront a growing range of catastrophic and existential risk attendant on the persistent crisis and breakdown within the global setting. I thank you all for your attention.
I thank the distinguished representative of Cameroon. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Uganda, who shall speak on behalf of the Non-Aligned Movement.
Mr. President, I am honored to speak on behalf of the one hundred and twenty-one member states of the Non-Aligned Movement, NAM. I thank you for your swift response to the request to resume this tenth Emergency Special Session, password to the joint request made by the chairs of the Non-Aligned Movement, Arab Group, the Organization of Islamic Cooperation on behalf of their member states. NAM welcomes the advisory opinion that was rendered by the International Court of Justice on nineteenth July, two thousand twenty-four, password to the request made by the General Assembly in its Resolutions seven-seven. in its Resolutions 77/247 of 30th December 2022. The determinations made by the Court in accordance with international law require immediate follow-up by the Assembly to address this prolonged historic injustice and particularly considering the extremely grave and worsening situation being endured by the Palestinian people in the occupied Palestinian territory, including East Jerusalem. NAM reiterates that respect of the UN Charter, international law and UN resolutions constitute the foundation for just and lasting solution of the Palestinian question as a cornerstone for regional and global peace and security. NAM acknowledges the role of the International Court of Justice, ICJ, in promoting justice and the peaceful settlement of international disputes in accordance with the relevant provisions of the UN Charter and the statute of the ICJ. The Non-Aligned Movement urges the Security Council to make greater use of the ICJ, the principal judicial organ of the UN, as a source of advisory opinions and interpretation of relevant norms of international law to guide and assist international efforts to justly resolve protracted crises and conflicts and promote peaceful resolutions. We further urge the Court, the Council, to consider that its decisions be reviewed by the ICJ, bearing in mind the need to ensure their adherence to the UN Charter and international law. The General Assembly has rightly availed itself of the ICJ in seeking its authoritative guidance regarding this prolonged crisis, the question of Palestine, which has been on the United Nations' agenda since the organization's inception. The Assembly's decision to turn to the Court has been made after decades of the injustices endured by the Palestinian people, including the deprivation of their inalienable right to self-determination, the colonization and annexation of their land and the discrimination amounting, as affirmed by the Court, to violations of Article III of the CERD concerning racial segregation and apartheid. In response to the General Assembly's questions, the Court has clearly determined earlier that Israel's presence in occupied Palestinian territory, including East Jerusalem, is unlawful and must be ended as rapidly as possible. It is now time to translate the Court's authoritative determinations into action for accountability towards ending this illegal occupation in all its manifestations and ensuring the realization of the inalienable rights of the Palestinian people, including to self-determination and independence and realization of a long-delayed justice. Mr. President, in this regard, the Movement reiterates that the policies and measures being carried out in occupied Palestinian territory, including East Jerusalem, by Israel, the occupying power, constitute breaches of international law and flagrant defiance of UN resolutions and the 19th July 2024 are advisory opinions of an International Court of Justice. In this regard, the Movement recalls the responsibilities of states not to support, facilitate or cooperate directly or indirectly with such unlawful policies and to undertake practical measures to bring them to a halt. We also urge the undertaking of serious efforts collectively and individually to ensure respect of the legal obligations defined in the ICG Advisory Committee, including efforts by the General Assembly and by the high contracting parties to the Fourth Geneva Convention. The Movement stresses that the UN Charter contains sufficient provisions regarding the use of force, including clear pronouncements on the inadmissibility on the acquisition of territory by force. This prohibition must be respected in all circumstances in order to maintain and preserve international peace and security in full conformity with the relevant Charter provisions, including in earlier chapters six, seven and eight of the Charter as appropriate and consistent with international law as pronounced by the ICJ. In recent years, the Security Council has made too quick to threaten authorized enforcement action in some cases and has been increasingly resorting to chapter seven of the Charter as an umbrella for addressing issues that do not necessarily pose an immediate threat to international peace and security while being silent and inactive in others such as President Question that the ICJ considered it in its advisory opinion as conflicts continues to pose a threat to international peace and security and remains a matter of grave concern to the international community. NAM reiterates in man that Israel, the occupying power, immediately cease all such violations of international law, including international humanitarian and human rights law, and fully abide by its legal obligations, including under the Fourth Geneva Convention. NAM also notes the 29th December 2023 application filed by member states of the Movement of Africa instituting proceedings against Israel before the ICJ concerning alleged violations by Israel of its obligations under the Convention on the Prevention and Punishment of the Crimes of Genocidal Relation to the Palestinians in the Gaza Strip. To conclude, the Movement senses this opportunity to reiterate this longstanding call for immediate collective international efforts to uphold international law to bring an end to this grave and historic injustice. Now, member states reaffirm their commitment to promoting a just, lasting, comprehensive and peaceful solution to the question of Palestine in all its aspects in accordance with the relevant UN resolutions. NAM reaffirms that it supports the Palestinian people in their struggle to achieve justice and fulfill their inalienable rights and legitimate national aspirations, including to return and to self-determination, freedom and independence in their sovereign and independent state of Palestine, with East Jerusalem as its capital, and stands ready to cooperate with and support the General Assembly and Security Council for the fulfillment of their respective responsibilities in this regard. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Uganda. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the Syrian Arab Republic, who shall speak on behalf of the Arab Group.
شكرًا سيدي الرئيس السيدات والسادة يسعدني أن أُدلي بهذا البيان نيابة عن المجموعه العربية ونتقدم إليكم السيد الرئيس بداية بالتهنية على توليكم رئاسة الدورة التاسعة والسبعين للجمعية العامة للأمم المتحدة ونتمنى لكم التوفيق في هذه المهمة السامية كما أتوجع إليكم بجزيل الشكر على استجابتكم للطلب الذي تقدمت به المجموعه العربية والمجموعه الإسلامية وحركة عدم الانحياس لاستئناف الدورة الاستسنائية الطارئة العاشرة وذلك في ضوء اصدار محكمة العدل الدولية بالتاريخ 19 تموذ يوليو 2024 لرأيها الاستشاري حول الأثار القانونية الناشئة عن سياسات إسرائيل وممارساتها في الأرض الفلسطينية المحتلة بما فيها القدس الشرقيه وعن عدم مشروعية استمرار وجود إسرائيل في الأرض الفلسطينية المحتلة لقد أكد هذا رأي الاستشاري على عدم قانونية استمرار وجود إسرائيل في الأرض الفلسطينية المحتلة وأن إسرائيل ملزمة بإنهاء وجودها غير القانوني في أسرع وقت ممكن والوقف الفوري لجميع الأنشطة الإستيطانية وتفكيك المستوتنات وإخلاق المستوتنين من الأرض الفلسطينية كما أكد رأي الاستشاري أن إسرائيل ملزمة بدفع تعويضات عن الأضرار التي لحقت بجميع الأشخاص الطبيعيين أو الاعتباريين المعنيين وأن جميع الدول والمنظمةات الدولية ملزمة بعدم اطفاء أي نوع من الاعتراف أو الشرعية للوضع الناشئ عن الوجود المستمر وغير القانوني للاحتلال Israeli للارض الفلسطيني المحتلة وبعدم تقديم العون أو المساعدة في الإبقاء على هذا الوضع غير القانوني ترحب المجموعه العربية بهذا رأي الاستشاري الذي صدر بناء على طلب الجمعية العامة وتشدد على ضرورة متابعته والعمل على تنفيذه وفقا لما أوصت به محكمة العدل الدولية في الفقرة الحكمية التاسعة من فتوها والتي تنص على أنه يتعين على الأمم المتحدة وخصوصا الجمعية العامة ومجلس الأمن النظر في الترائق المحددة والاجراءات الإضافية اللازمة لوضع حد في أسرع وقت ممكن للوجود غير القانوني للاحتلال Israeli في الأرض الفلسطيني المحتلة السيد الرئيس عملا بتوصية محكمة العدل الدولية قام وفد دولة فلسطين مدعوما من قبل عشرات الدول الأعضاء بتقديم مشروع القرار المعرض أمامكم اليوم ونتقدم بهذه المناسبة بالتهنية إلى دولة فلسطين لمباشرتها التمتع بالحقوق والامتيازات الإضافية التي أقرتها الجمعية العامة اعتبارا من هذه الدورة والتي مكنت وفدها اليوم من تقديم مشروع القرار التاريخي هازه وتطلع المجموعه العربية لنيل دولة فلسطين العضوية الكاملة في الأمم المتحدة في أقرب وقت السيدات والسادة لقد مضى ما يقارب العام على بدء العدوان Israeli الغاشم على الشعب الفلسطيني في قطاع غزة وأسفرت حرب الإبادة الجماعية التي ترتكبها قوات الاحتلال Israeli عن أكثر من 145 ألف مدني فلسطيني بين شهيدا وجريح ومفقود نهيك عن تهجير ما يقارب مليوني فلسطيني والتدمير الممنهج للمدن والقرى والمخيمات الفلسطينية وبنياتها التحتية وحرق وتدمير المنازل والمزارع والمنتلكات ولم يقتصر الأمر على ذلك بل وسعت إسرائيل القوة القائمة بالاحتلال وعصابات المستوتنين من نتاق جرائمهم إلى الضفة الغربية حيث قتلت مئات村民ين الفلسطينيين وألحقت عصابات بالغة بأعداد كبيرة غيرهم تدين المجموعه العربية بأشد العبارات جرائم الاحتلال Israeli بحق الشعب الفلسطيني وتطالب بوقفها الفوري وغير المشروط كما تدين السياسات والاجراءات العدوانية التي تتخزها إسرائيل القوة القائمة بالاحتلال ضد جسيده استقلال دولة فلسطين وأمعانها في خطط ضم الضفة الغربية المحتلة والتوسع الإستيطاني الاستعماري في سائر الأراضي الفلسطينية والجولان السوري المحتل وتجدد المجموعه العربية إدانتها العدوان Israeli المستمر منذ أكثر من 11 شهرا على لبنان الشقيق والقصف Israeli المتعمد للمناطق المدنية والذي أدى لاستشهد أكثر من 175 مدنيا جلهم من النساء والأطفال وعدد من الصحافيين وعمال الإغاثة كما تجد المجموعه إدانتها الاعتداءات Israeli المتكررة على الأراضي السورية واستهداف قوات الاحتلال Israeli للمدنيين والأحياء السكنية والبناء التحتية وتؤكد المجموعه تضامنها مع سوريا ولبنان وتطالب بوقف الأعمال العدوانية Israeli فورا تلافيا للمزيد من التصعيد الذي يهدد السلم والأمن الأقليميين والدوليين السيد الرئيس لقد استأنفت الجمعية العامة دورتها الاستسنائية هازه في سلاس مناسبات على مدى الأشهر 11 الماضية وعتمدت سلاسة قرارات هامة تدعو للوقف الفوري لإطلاق النار وضمان وصول المساعدات الإنسانية إضافة لمنح امتحازات إضافية لفلسطين إن أعضاء الجمعية العامة مدعون اليوم مجددا لإظهار دعمهم للشعب الفلسطيني وكفاحيه الطويل من أجل إنهاء الاحتلال Israeli لأرضه وممارسة حقه الراسخ غير القابل للتصريف في تقيير مصيره وإقامة دولته المستقلة ذات السيادة وعاصمتها القدس ونيلها العضوية الكاملة في الأمم المتحدة إن التضامن مع الشعب الفلسطيني وحقوقه المشروع يتجله في دعم مشروع القرار المقدم لهذه الدورة والتصويت لصالحه وهذا أقل ما يمكن القيام به للاسهام في رفع الظلم التاريخي الطويل الذي وقع على الشعب الفلسطيني السيد الرئيس أود الإدلاء بالملاحظات التالية بالصفة الوطنية ينضم وفد بلادي لبيان المجموعه العربية والبيان الذي أدلى به المندوب الدائم لأغاندا نيابة عن حركة عدم الانحياس وأجدد التهنية لكم على توليكم مهامكم وأكد استعداد وفد بلادي لتقديم كل العون للمساهمة في أنجاح أعمالكم كما أشكركم على الاستجابة السريعة لطلب عقد هذه الجلسه الطارئة السيد الرئيس تجد سوريا إدانتها بأشد العبارات للعدوان Israeli الهمجي المتوسط على قطاع غزة والضفة الغربية والذي يمثل استمرارا للمجازر واعمال العدوان والارهاب والانتهكات الممنجة للقانون الدولي التي رتكبها الاحتلال Israeli على مدى عقود بغرض تكريس احتلاله للاراضي العربية ومحاولة تقويد فرس قيام الدولة الفلسطينية تجد سوريا الأعراب عن دعمها الكامل للشعب الفلسطيني الشقيق في معاهة آلة القتل Israeli وفي نضاله لإنهاء الاحتلال والتمتع بحقوقه الراسخة وغير القابلة للتصريف بما فيها حقه في إقامة دولته المستقلة وعاصمتها القدس ونيلها العضوية الكاملة في الأمم المتحدة وترحب بلادي بالرأي الاستشاري الصادر عن محكمة العدل الدولية وتطالب بوضعه موضع التنفيز لإنهاء الاحتلال Israeli تؤكد سوريا أن الاحتلال Israeli كان ولا يزال السبب الأساسي لما تشهده منطقةنا من عدم استقرار وتطالب الأمم المتحدة بالتحرك العاجل لوضع قراراتها ذات الصلة موضع التنفيز لإنهاء الاحتلال ووقف سياسات العدوان والتوسع والإستيطان والإبادة الجماعية وجرائم الحرب والجرائم ضد الإنسانية التي ترتكبها سلطات الاحتلال والتي ما كانت لتتمع فيها لولا الدعم لا محدود الذي توفره لها الادارة الأمريكية وعدد من حلفائها كما تطالب سوريا الأمم المتحدة بوضع حد للاعتداءات Israeli المتكررة على أراضيها والتي استهدفت مؤخرا ريف محافظة حماة ومجد الشمس في الجولان العربي السوري المحتل وتشدد على وجوه مساءلة سلطات الاحتلال عن جرائمها وضمان عدم تكرارها تلافيا لدفع المنطقة نحو المزيد من التصعيد وتهديد السلم والأمن الأقليميين والدوليين وتؤكد بلادي حقها الراسخ في الدفاع عن سيادة أراضيها واستعادة الجولان السوري المحتل كاملا بكافة الوسائل التي يكفلها القانون الدولي كما تدين سوريا العدوان Israeli المتوسط على لبنان الشقيق وتجدد الأعراب عن تضامنها القوي والثابت مع الشعب اللبناني وتطالب بالزام كيان الاحتلال بالوقف الفوري وغير المشروط لهذا العدوان الآسيم شكرًا سيدي الرئيس
I thank the distinguished representative of the Syrian Arab Republic. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Chile.
señor presidente primero que todos deseamos felicitarlos por su reciente designación como presidente de la Asamblea General hacemos extensivos los buenos deseos de éxitos al resto de la mesa que usted dirigirá por este año Chile suscribe la intervención realizada por Uganda en nombre del movimiento de los países no alineados agradecemos esta convocatoria al décimo periodo extraordinario de sesiones de emergencia de la Asamblea General para discutir un proyecto de resolución presentado por Palestina titulado seguimiento de la opinión consultiva de la Corte Internacional de Justicia sobre las consecuencias jurídicas de las políticas y prácticas de Israel en el territorio palestino ocupado incluida Jerusalén Oriental y de la ilegalidad de la presencia continua de Israel en el territorio palestino ocupado nuestro país copatrocinó este borrador e instamos a respaldarlo recordamos que el 30 de diciembre de 2022 en su resolución 77/247 esta misma Asamblea General aprobó una opinión consultiva de la Corte Internacional de Justicia llamada prácticas israelíes que afectan los derechos humanos del pueblo palestino en el territorio palestino ocupado incluyendo Jerusalén Oriental en tal ocasión mi país votó a favor en tal ocasión mi país votó a favor igual como lo realizaremos en esta oportunidad. Chile ha insistido que se debe dar cabal y pronto cumplimiento a las resoluciones pertinentes que respaldan el derecho del pueblo palestino a constituir un estado soberano como son las resoluciones 181 y 242 de esta Asamblea General y también aquellas relacionadas como la resolución 2334 del Consejo de Seguridad donde se reafirma que el establecimiento de asentamientos por parte de Israel en el territorio palestino ocupado incluida Jerusalén Oriental no tiene validez legal y constituye una violación del derecho internacional. reafirmamos nuestro apoyo al Estado de Palestina para que sea admitido como miembro de pleno derecho de las Naciones Unidas. señor presidente, deseamos expresar una vez más las condolencias de Chile a las familias y seres queridos de las víctimas que amuerto en el conflicto que azota la franja de Gaza y que con el paso del día solo aumenta. somos especialmente sensibles por las mujeres y los niños inocentes que han padecido en esta catástrofe. subrayamos que la violencia no se soluciona con más violencia. extendemos nuestra profunda solidaridad con los heridos. reiteramos el completo apoyo al dedicado y valiente trabajo que están realizando las Naciones Unidas sus agencias y particularmente la UNRWA en terreno. con mucho pesar sentimos la muerte de más de 220 funcionarios de esta agencia humanitaria en esta guerra. por esto, con conmoción, nos enteramos la semana pasada del ataque israelí a una escuela de la UNRWA en la que murieron 18 personas entre ellas seis trabajadores de esta agencia. esto es totalmente inaceptable y una evidente violación del derecho internacional. recordamos la resolución 2730 del Consejo de Seguridad adoptada el 24 de mayo de este año que exige que las partes en conflicto cumplan con sus obligaciones bajo el derecho internacional e insta a todos los Estados a emprender de inmediato investigaciones exhaustivas e imparciales sobre las violaciones perpetradas contra el personal humanitario y de la ONU. recallamos que la protección a la vida humana debe ser nuestra máxima prioridad y la protección a los civiles es una obligación fundamental. por esto, se debe respetar la Carta de la ONU, el derecho internacional y el derecho internacional humanitario. indudablemente, este respeto ha sido infringido por los actos terroristas perpetrados por Hamas el 7 de octubre pasado y la respuesta indiscriminada del Estado de Israel sobre la población que habita en la franja de Gaza y que también ha afectado así Jordania. Chile ha condenado sin ماتيس الأفعال de Hamas al igual que todo acto terrorista hechos de violencia y hostilidades contra la población civil. por lo anterior, exigimos la liberación inmediata y sin condiciones de todos los rehénes aún en manos de Hamas velando por su bienestar y trato en conformidad al derecho internacional. nos preocupa el asedio impuesto por Israel a la franja de Gaza porque ha significado dejar a su población sin sus necesidades básicas tales como alimento, agua, medicinas y combustible provocando حمل generalizada y enfermedades. containamos la ofensiva militar de Israel contra la ciudad de Rafah. las consecuencias de esta operación militar son nefastas y solo dilatan la estabilidad de la región. es de profunda preocupación la prolongación de la violencia. hacemos eco del llamado del propio secretario general y los respectivos jefes de otras agencias de la ONU para disminuir las tensiones. distinguimos los esfuerzos de la coordinadora humanitaria y de la reconstrucción en Gaza, señora Sigrid Card, en sus labores y abogamos para que reciba todas las facilidades para llevar a cabo su cometido. agradecemos la claridad de la ponencia que ella realizó ayer lunes en el Consejo de Seguridad. Chile solicita un alto al fuego inmediato y permanente, un mayor flujo de asistencia humanitaria hacia Gaza, garantías para el acceso pleno, inmediato, seguro, sin trabas y sostenido de la ayuda humanitaria, es decir, que se eliminen todos los obstáculos a dicha asistencia y facilitar el uso de todas las rutas terrestres disponibles para ingresar a la franja de Gaza. ألبامos que la campaña de vacunación contra la poliomielitis en Gaza se esté realizando durante las pausas humanitarias accordadas. ألنتامos que los equipos de ayuda logren el objetivo de llegar a más niños y niñas en riesgo. animamos a todas las partes involucradas así como a la comunidad internacional a seguir trabajando para terminar esta guerra. esto solo es posible a través de la vía diplomática y el diálogo. reconocemos los esfuerzos y resultados que países amigos han logrado para reducir las tensiones. esperamos que los buenos oficios de Estados Unidos, Egipto y Qatar se puedan concretar. destacamos las cuatro resoluciones aprobadas en el Consejo de Seguridad en pos de conseguir el cese al fuego, أminorarlo o brindar facilidades a la ayuda humanitaria la 2712 y la 2720 adoptadas el año pasado y especialmente la 2728 y la 2735 de este año. recordamos que todas las resoluciones de este órgano son vinculantes y deben ser أكادadas y respetadas. señor presidente, Chile promueve la solución de los dos estados y el derecho de Israel y Palestina a vivir en harmonía dentro de fronteras internacionales seguras y reconocidas y con total respeto a los derechos humanos de todos sus habitantes. Chile siempre ha afirmado como prioridad de su política exterior el contribuir a alcanzar una solución pacífica en el Medio Oriente comentando constantemente nuestro apoyo a una solución justa y duradera conforme a las resoluciones de las Naciones Unidas. recordamos que Chile junto con México رميتى إلى la Corte Penal Internacional un escrito sobre la situación en Palestina para reforzar la investigación de los presuntos crímenes de guerra y crímenes de lesa humanidad cometidos en Gaza, Sijordania, Jerusalén Este e Israel. para Chile, el esclarecimiento de los hechos y responsabilidades así como la rendición de cuentas son esenciales para poner fin a la impunidad y prevenir la futura comisión de crímenes internacionales. subrayamos que las medidas cautelares adoptadas por la Corte Internacional de Justicia deben ser cumplidas por todas las partes. el jueves de la semana pasada, Chile presentó ante la Corte Internacional de Justicia su escrito de intervención en el marco de la demanda presentada por Sudáfrica contra Israel sobre la aplicación de la Convención para la prevención y la sanción del delito de genocidio en la franja de Gaza. esta declaración fue presentada de acuerdo con lo previsto en el artículo 63 del Estatuto de la Corte que establece el derecho de cualquier estado a intervenir cuando se trate de la interpretación de una Convención en la cual también es parte. el escrito nacional se centra en analizar disposiciones específicas de la Convención para la prevención y la sanción del delito de genocidio así como la posición de Chile sobre su interpretación. en el texto también saludé a la reciente opinión consultiva de la Corte Internacional de Justicia sobre las consecuencias jurídicas derivadas de las políticas y prácticas de Israel en el territorio palestino ocupado incluida Jerusalén Este, del 19 de julio de 2024 en la cual se concluyó que el régimen de restricciones integrales impuesto por Israel a los palestinos en el territorio palestino ocupado "constituye una discriminación sistemática basada entre otras cosas en la raza, la religión o el origen étnico". en la intervención nacional se sostiene que la Corte Internacional de Justicia debería dar especial importancia al contenido de las declaraciones de algunos funcionarios públicos israelíes de alto nivel que han hecho llamamientos para matar a todas las personas que viven en Gaza o a ignorar su estatus civil. así mismo, se afirma que la incitación directa y pública a cometer genocidio es un delito autónomo castigado bajo la Convención incluso si no produce el resultado esperado por el autor si no existe relación causal entre el discurso y los actos posteriores y si de ello no se deriva ningún acto de genocidio. señor presidente, para finalizar comparto la siguiente reflexión. estamos a pocos días de celebrar la Cumbre del Futuro. hemos trabajado todos arduamente para acordar un pacto para el futuro. sin embargo, no hay futuro sostenible si no abordamos y solucionamos situaciones tan graves como la que hoy se vive en la franja de Gaza. es fundamental primero por la vida de las personas que habitan ese territorio pero lo es también para las Naciones Unidas como organización que nace para garantizar la paz y la seguridad. si nos comprometemos con un multilateralismo renovado comprometámonos también con un mundo donde los acuerdos a los que hemos llegado se honren. la confianza en el sistema multilateral también depende que los conflictos armados que hoy enfrentamos tengan una respuesta efectiva y contundente de parte de este organismo. muchas gracias.
I thank the distinguished representative of Chile. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Pakistan.
Mr. President, please accept our felicitations on assuming the presidency of the 79th Session of the General Assembly. We thank you also for convening this resumed 10th Emergency Special Session of the General Assembly in response to the requests of the Arab, the OIC and the Non-LINE Movement. My delegation aligns with the statement made by the ambassadors of Cameroon on behalf of the OIC and of Uganda on behalf of the Non-LINE Movement. Mr. President, the purpose of this emergency session is to translate into action the historic and comprehensive advisory opinion delivered by the International Court of Justice on 19 July 2024 on the legal consequences of Israel's policies and practices in the occupied Palestinian territory including East Jerusalem. Pakistan has co-sponsored the draft resolution contained in document ES10-L31 Rev 1 presented with its enhanced rights by the State of Palestine which seeks to implement the conclusions of the ICJ. Mr. President, the tragic history of Palestine and its people has been caused by a series of legal and political decisions imposed by colonial and imperial powers. From the Balfour Declaration, the epitome of political betrayal, to the Anglo-American decision to allow Jews persecuted by the Nazis to immigrate to Israel, to the plan to partition Palestine embodied in the ignominious Resolution 181 adopted by this assembly despite the just Arab and Islamic opposition to the precipitate admission of Israel to the United Nations. Pakistan's founding father Mohammed Ali Chinah warned in 1948 that Israel's creation would have grave consequences for the peoples of the region. History is witness to these consequences. A state foisted on the land of the Palestinians. The brutal expulsion of the Palestinians in the Nakba. An expansion of the illegal state. The complete occupation of all of Palestine by Israeli military aggression in 1967. A brutal occupation which has lasted 50 years. The steady acquisition of Palestinian lands, properties and homes to accommodate illegal and aggressive Jewish settlers. The imposition of a segregated apartheid rule in occupied Palestine. The unlawful incarceration of thousands of Palestinians subjected to torture, deprivation and humiliation. The 30-year siege of Gaza. And now the frequent violations visited on innocent Palestinians including indiscriminate aerial and land bombardment killing thousands of mostly women and children. Which is now writ large in the ongoing genocide in Gaza where 41,000 Palestinians have been killed and almost 100,000 injured. A conflict which threatens to spread across and engulf the entire Middle East. Mr. President, against this grim background, the ICJ's advisory opinion marks a milestone of justice. An expression of equity and a flame of hope. The ICJ's conclusions emphasize that Israel's occupation of the West Bank, East Jerusalem and Gaza and its attempts to prolong the occupation and its security policies violate two basic principles of international law. One, the right of peoples to self-determination. And two, the principle of non-acquisition of territory by the use of force. In accordance with the ICJ's advisory opinion, the draft resolution demands that Israel immediately, completely and unconditionally withdraw from the occupied Palestinian territories. Immediately put an end to its unlawful policies and procedures. Make reparations for damages caused. Comply with the ICJ's orders and ensure that the Palestinian people can exercise their right to self-determination without impediment. The draft resolution also underlines the need to hold Israel accountable for its violations of international law and to bear the consequences of all its wrongful actions including by making reparations for injury and damage caused through the establishment of an international mechanism and an international register of damage. Mr. President, importantly, the ICJ's advisory opinion also indicates the obligations of member states in relation to Israel's occupation. Accordingly, the draft resolution inter alia calls on member states in compliance with their obligations to promote Palestinian self-determination. To refuse to recognize any change in the institutional structure and status of the occupied territory and not to recognize or provide aid or assistance in maintaining Israeli occupation. Furthermore, the draft resolution calls on international organizations, including the United Nations not to recognize as legal the situation arising from Israel's illegal occupation. The Secretary General has also been asked to submit a report on the implementation of this resolution within three months. Mr. President, the adoption of the draft resolution before us will require a re-evaluation of the position of member states and the United Nations especially the Security Council with regard to Palestine. First, this should reinvigorate the efforts of the international community to oblige Israel to halt its genocidal military campaign in Gaza and its operations in the West Bank and to withdraw its forces forthwith from there. Second, those states which are continuing to provide military and material support to Israel must halt this in accordance with their obligation not to help in perpetuating Israeli occupation. Third, we must take concrete steps to enable the Palestinians to exercise their right to self-determination. One important step is to admit the State of Palestine as a full member of the United Nations. Another would be to convene the International Conference on Palestine to advance the two-state solution. Mr. President, Pakistan will actively promote the realization the realization of the objectives and decisions arising from the ICJ's advisory opinion and the adoption of the draft resolution in document L thirty-one Rev. one. Pakistan's solidarity with the Palestinian people predates the independence of our own country. We realized independence through the exercise of self-determination. On fourteen August, forty-seven, our founding father, Khaidy Azam, stated, and I quote, "No nation, no people who are worth living as a nation can achieve anything great without making great sacrifice, such as the Arabs of Palestine are making." In nineteen forty-eight, he pledged to aid the cause, I quote, "of the Arabs in Palestine in every possible way." Mr. President, we have lived up to that commitment, and we will continue to live up to that commitment. The opinion of the ICJ and the adoption of the draft resolution before us will be one decisive step towards ending the suffering of the Palestinian people. Inshallah, Palestine will soon be free. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Pakistan. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Egypt.
President, I would like to congratulate the General Assembly on its contribution and to encourage the Syrian people to strengthen their stance on the movement of the peace movement, the Islamist movement, and the Arab movement. President, we are here today after the talks between the Arab and Islamist groups and the movement of peace movement in the 2010 World Trade Commission to present the motion for a decision, the one that is being voted on, AES-TAN-L-31, and the first time in the history of the General Assembly from the Palestinian state of Palestine for the opinion of the European Court of Justice on the legal framework that is being applied to Israel's policies and movements in the Palestinian landfills, and therefore the southern part of the continent, in accordance with the General Assembly's number two seven forty, in the seventy-seven year 2022 election. President, the Palestinian movement has left Palestine with the support of the people of the peace movement, the faith in the national law, and the faith in the United Nations' agreement on receiving this opinion and the approval of the European Court of Justice and the Security Council, starting from a true complaint that seeks a silent solution to the Palestinian case. We are faithful to the national law, and the faith in the United Nations' and believe that the war has never been the solution for the struggle in the Shia region. President, the opinion of the European Court of Justice has shown that the Palestinian people are in agreement with the Palestinian law's provision and the end of the occupation, and that the Palestinian state is on the fourth of June, 1967, and that the southern part of the continent is clear and clear. As was the European Court of Justice's argument that the Israeli occupation of the northern part of the continent and the southern part of the continent, and the Gaza section, is contrary to the national law, and that the occupation is a repeat of the Palestinian law's provision that is defined by the American law. It uses the force that is strong on the border with the intent to bring it to Israel and force its dominance on it in a way that is inadequate to the right. And the Israeli movements against the Palestinian people in the landfills have completed the third agreement of the Israeli-Palestinian agreement. In addition, the European Court of Justice has also agreed on the Israeli's refusal to end the occupation, and therefore, the abolition of the Palestinian citizens' rights and the return of the Palestinian people and the militants during the occupation to their original countries. President, I would like to remind you that most of the parties who have agreed to the European Court of Justice have already suspended the court's decision for twenty years, because it is the founder of the issue. And that is the opinion that has remained stubbornly. President, we are convinced that the European Court of Justice's decision has suspended that the international community, including all the parties in the United Nations, have given up their constitutional rights to the Palestinian people for the work of the Palestinian population in the Palestinian occupation. In addition, it takes any measures that are necessary to stop the occupation or any of the illegal persons involved. Therefore, it moves the flights to the Palestinian landfills, the Palestinian landfills, or the entry into meetings or the establishment of trade relations with Israeli institutions that are associated with the occupation. As I have suspended the opinion of the European Court of Justice that the United Nations' policy and the special interests of the Palestinian people are stronger than the other ones in the work of the Israeli occupation and taking the necessary measures to protect Israel's citizens who have suspended the court's decision, it is a necessity to end the occupation immediately. I am warning President that the Israeli occupation of his and his citizens' rights cannot continue in life if the parties who object to the national law and the European Court of Justice's decision are stopped and stop the cooperation and cooperation with them. It has suspended the occupation and stopped the Israeli occupation of the Palestinian population in a way that is necessary for the national security. Or what is left of the illegal protestant's right to express protest after Israel suspended its subsequent occupation of the Palestinian landfills. As it happened, it happened in the occupation of the United Nations' own country by killing more than twenty-two hundred Palestinian officers. What is done to the militant to sign a law that punishes the illegal persons as a criminal organization. In the past, it has not happened, and we imagine it will not happen, by a military organization. President, the opinion of the European Court of Justice has continued in the fight against the Israeli war in the Gaza section. It has received more than forty thousand victims, more than ninety thousand Palestinian, and it has raised the need for assistance by the counter to the national laws and the United Nations' decisions, particularly the decision of seventy-two twenty. Without the Security Council, without a clear agreement that it will end the Palestinian population's movements, in addition to the Israeli's military power to the northern part and its opposition to the state in the northern part of the continent, and its declaration of the current condition of the faith in the religion of the religion, and the way that it operates on the Palestinian government's power, the charade of the Palestinian population. All of this is in the end to stop the Palestinian people on their landfills and try to fix the case. President, I am warning here again about what we have said before with the intention of the Security Council to approve the seventh amendment, which will lock Israeli in a stoppage of the occupation and defeat the assistance without limitations for the peace and national security, and its objection to its subsequent occupation of the national law and the failure to approve the Security Council's decisions. President, we are faithful to the support of the peace and the illegal protestant's right. We are in agreement with the Middle East with Qatar and the United States to move to a ceasefire, to stop the fire, to end these grievances, other than the previous. We are in agreement with the legal and national responsibility of the illegal and the protestant without the acceptance of some arguments that are not responsible from the Israeli president against the Iranian side to restore the opinion of the Israeli president and raise the Middle East. As we are in agreement with the Arab and the Palestinian supporters in the peace process, and in the application of a controversial action that allows the Palestinian population to have his right in his own country in the landfills on the fourth of June, 1967, and that the southern part of the continent is clear. It is in accordance with the provisions and the national laws for the peace process, which has suspended the two countries. And they all request from us, in fact, and in a manner of respect, to bring it to an end through the actions of the international community in the counter with the Arab system. And they ask for a hard place against Israel to tell her to return to the long dispute and to end the occupation after it has proved the current situation is wrong, and has failed, and has failed to succeed in the Israeli's national security, standing above the power. President, I would like to say to the General Assembly that we are faithful to every right and justice that we have, that we are trying, in order to serve the purpose of the decision that was voted on in the last election, to protect the trust of these criminal organizations, to help a silent solution to the Palestinian case and to other cases, to protect our rights, in all of us, to live with respect and freedom, and to serve the right and the justice, and to end the dispute. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Egypt. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Turkey.
Mr. President, let me begin by congratulating you on assuming the presidency of the General Assembly and to express our appreciation for convening this tenth emergency special session. This session reflects the gravity of the situation and the collective responsibility of this body to address it. As a co-sponsor of this resolution introduced by Palestine and a committed advocate of the International Court of Justice proceedings, Turkey regards this session as both timely and essential. Mr. President, the court's advisory opinion, delivered on July nineteenth, opened the request of this August body, categorically determined the illegality of Israel's deliberately prolonged occupation of Palestinian territories. The ICJ's ruling, as the highest judicial body within the UN system, reaffirms what has long been the consensus of the international community, which is the occupation is lawful and must be ended. This conclusion not only provides a legal foundation but also reinforces the political will of the majority of member states. The forthcoming vote on the resolution presented by Palestine is of historical significance. It not only constitutes the first resolution presented by Palestine to the General Assembly but also symbolizes a pivotal step in the Palestinian people's pursuit of justice. The resolution is not merely procedural. It is emblematic of a broader movement within the international community to rectify longstanding injustices. Therefore, it is vital that we, as the member states, act in line with the ICJ's findings and the principles enshrined in the UN Charter. Turkey urges all member states to support this resolution as it is consistent with the international law and the legal framework established by the ICJ. The resolution's adoption would mark a crucial reaffirmation of the collective commitment to upholding international legal norms. Mr. President, this resolution underscores three critical dimensions of the current situation. First, it reinforces the fundamental principles of the United Nations Charter and international law. Implementing the court's advisory opinion is imperative if we are to uphold the core principle that territorial accusation by force is inadmissible. Second, the international community must signal clearly that violations of international law will not be tolerated. The occupation and ongoing settlement activities in the West Bank are not only illegal but undermine the prospects for peace. Accountability in this case is not just a moral imperative but a legal one. Third, the ongoing conflict in Gaza, now in its eleventh month, exacerbates an already dire humanitarian crisis. The resolutions passed by this assembly, as well as the Security Council resolutions twenty-seven twenty-eight and twenty-seven twenty-five, calling for a ceasefire, remain unhindered. The suffering of the Palestinian people continues and awaited, and the lack of the implementation highlights the urgent need for concrete action. Adoption of the resolution is crucial to reinforce the international community's call for a ceasefire and to halt the illegal settlement activities that perpetuate the conflict. Turkey has been an active participant in the ICJ process, contributing both written and oral submissions to the advisory opinion. We will continue our efforts to ensure an immediate and lasting ceasefire as well as unhindered delivery of humanitarian aid to Gaza and work towards the recognition of the State of Palestine and the viable two-state solution. In conclusion, the decisions made in this assembly will have lasting implications not only for Palestine but for the credibility of international law and the UN. The international community must demonstrate that it is prepared to enforce the standards it has set and that justice, even if it is delayed, will ultimately prevail. Thank you for your attention.
I thank the distinguished representative of Turkey. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Indonesia.
Mr. President, thank you for convening this meeting. Mr. President, international law is the pillar of a stable global society, ensuring justice, protection of freedom, and enabling countries to thrive. Without them, chaos disrupts global peace and progress. The ICJ, the world's court, has made it clear: Israel's occupation of Palestine is illegal. Continued global inaction, enabled through the might is right, has allowed this occupation to thrive, causing injustice and tremendous suffering to the Palestinian people. The assembly must now act on the ICJ ruling. The occupation must end. Indonesia therefore wholeheartedly supports the draft resolution tabled by the State of Palestine. It contains legitimate actions that address these injustices. In this context, allow me to emphasize three points. First, implementation of the ICJ advisory opinion is the embodiment of our belief and commitment to international law and order. The ruling is more than just legal authority. It is a moral imperative. All states must recognize the State of Palestine, support the full membership in the United Nations, and uphold its right to self-determination. The systematic structure of apartheid, discrimination, and injustice must be dismantled. Second, we must safeguard the integrity of the UN Charter and our basic human value. Allowing the illegal occupation of Palestine to continue undermines the very foundation of the international system that was built to preserve justice, moral value, and humanity. Let us be honest, can we say to the children in Gaza, in the West Bank, and East Jerusalem? هل يمكننا أن نقول للشباب في Gaza وفي الوراء المتجدّة وجنوب إسرائيل أن هناك يوم لهم؟ لا، لا يمكننا ذلك. لا يمكننا أن نقول هذا للشباب الذين يبقىون في منطقة إسرائيل designated للمساعدة الإقليمية. من عيني الجمهور، وضع هذا الأطراف هو يقف عادلا بينما الحقّ الأساسي للحياة للشعب فلسطيني يأخذ من قبل حكومة مذكّرة. ماذا سيظل من صلاح القانون الدولي؟ ثالثا، يجب أن نبحث عن حل سياسي للصراع الفلسطيني. صلة قرار ICJ هي الالعابية لمساحات إسرائيل. يجب أن نطلب من جميعنا أن نأخذ صحة سياسية أننا يجب أن نضمن حلقة واحدة للدول. نحتاج إلى توافير مؤتمر دولي لتفاوض السلام حيث تقع فلسطين على مساحة متسعة. الوقت للoorاية هو الآن. يجب أن ننتقل نحو السلام. مسّر الرئيس، دعونا نفعل للحلول لضمان أن وعدة السلام وحقوقنا تصبح حقيقة لكل طفل وperson في Gaza و beyond. شكرًا لك.
أنا أشكر الممثلة المميزة للإندونيسيا. الآن أعطي ال席ة للممثلة المميزة للمالتّا.
الرئيس، الرؤوس، على يوم 19 من فبراير، حكمة القانون الدولي على طلب مجلس الإدارة العام اخترت نصوص الموجهة حول التأثير القانوني الذي يظهر من السياسات والمارسات من إسرائيل في территорيات فلسطينية المحتلّة بما في ذلك جنوب إسرائيل. حكمة حكمة وجدت أن وجود إسرائيل في территорيات فلسطينية المحتلّة مستقر قانوني وانه ينطوي على مسؤولية إنهاءه أسرع ما يمكن. بين التأثير القانوني الذي يظهر من نصوص الموجهة هي مسؤولية من جزء مجلس الإدارة العام وكذلك مجلس الأمن ل reconsidering التحديدات والعملات التالية التي تحتاجها لانهاء وجود إسرائيل مستقر. في هذا السياق، مالتّا تأثّر مسؤولية لا تزال على القانون الدولي. الاتباه إليها هي ضرورية للتوصل إلى السلام، الأمن والعدل. الاعتبار والتنفيذ findings من institutions القانونية الدولية بما في ذلك ICJ هو أساسية. كل دول يجب أن يعتبار القرارات من جزئاتنا ويعملون بكاملة في تنفيذها. نظامنا المختلّي depend on it. الرئيس، في جميع أنحاء территорيات فلسطينية المحتلّة، يواجه الشعب فلسطيني حقيقة مأساة لمدة خمسة سبع سنوات. يُحبطون من التواجد بالقانون ال歧ودي والحرجات على حقوق الإنسان频繁 الالعابية فقط تساعد على إنجاز حلقة واحدة للدول وحقّ الالعابية للشعب فلسطيني للتحديد يبدو كاستغلال ومستقبلا. كدول مشاركّة، لدينا مسؤولية للانتقال هذا إلى الأمام، و務ية موضّعة من قبل ICJ. هذا يشمل عدم رأي إسرائيل كقانوني ووجوده مستقر في территорيات فلسطينية و عدم تقديم المساعدة أو المساعدة في الحفاظ على الالعابية. كل عمليات الالعابية يجب أن تنتهي立即. إنهم قانونية تحت القانون الدولي، تضمن تأثير لحدها الدولة الفلسطينية المستقبلية وانه تحرير حقوق الشعب فلسطيني للتحديد. الرئيس، عشرات آلاف السباقين مقتل في الحرب في Gaza وعديد منهم مقتل من حياتهم. مخاوف مغادرة by Hamas وfamilies يمرّون في الحياة من خلال حلم عالٍ. استهداف لحرب استهداف سريع ومرتدي في Gaza يجب أن يتم تنفيذه بسرعة. المخاوف يجب أن تكون立即 وبدون تأييد. لقد تذكّرنا هذا الرسالة بشكل مستمر منذ يوم سبعة. هذه الحرب المأساة فقط توضح الحاجة للإجابة على أسباب القلب من هذا الصراع واتخاذ خطوات متمكّنة نحو تحقيق حلقة واحدة للدول في ترجمة قرار مجلس الأمن و parameters agreed internationally. هذا الطريق يتطلب قوة، قرارات، واعتبار كامل القانون الدولي. هذا هو السبب في أن مالتّا سيدّا بدعم القرار أمامنا اليوم. شكرًا لك.
أنا أشكر الممثلة المميزة للمالتّا. الآن أعطي ال席ة للممثلة المميزة للليبيا.
مسّر الرئيس، في البداية، دعوني أتحدث باللغة الإنجليزية لأنني أريد اليوم أن أرسل رسائل clear و لا تفقد في الترجمة. في نفس الوقت، أود أن أتوافق مع نفسي مع الم statements من مجموعة العربية، من مجموعة الإسلام، وmovement غير التوازن. يا رفاق، نحن هنا اليوم لdebتال هذا القرار حول نصوص الموجهة لمنظمة ICJ حول التأثير القانوني الذي يظهر من الالعابية المستقرة من قبل قوى إسرائيل في территорيات فلسطينية، والتي كانت متحمسة ل joining تأكيدها. هذا القرار الذي تم إخباره من قبل جزء الدولة الفلسطينية هو بمثابة لحظة تاريخية، هو أول أفعال تتخذها بعد الحصول على المفضلة الممتدة والانتظار الطويل منذ بداية هذا الاجتماع العشرين عام. لسوء الحظ، كان عليهم أن ينتظرون سبعون عامًا ل that to happen. 所以在 هذا السياق، من المهم أن تذكركم أن الوقت الآن أيضًا لتقديم لهم الارتباط بأكمله في الأمم المتحدة. ولكن بينما أنا أقف هنا أمامكم اليوم، أجد نفسي مصعدًا و struggling لفهم ما ن争论ه بالضبط. الناس العاديين الذين يشاهدوننا سيتساءلون هذا لأننا ن争论 ما إذا كان يجب علينا التأكيد مع نتائج القانونية الأكثر أهمية وفخرة منظمة دولية، الكال منظمة القانونية. نحن ن争论 ما إذا كان يجب علينا التأكيد مع القانون الدولي. على مدى أهمية و timing هذا نصوص ICJ، لكننا لا يجب أن نتجاهل حقيقة أن الالعابية في территорيات فلسطينية كانت وتظل مستقرة. ولا أحد منكم مضطر إلى الانتظار ل all these decades for such a advisory opinion to know that. ولكن هنا نحن. والoorاية الحقيقية تبدأ الآن. الoorاية الحقيقية اليوم هي ل those countries who preach and call others to respect the international law and rule of law. إذن ما هي وضعك الآن؟ الoorاية الحقيقية اليوم هي ل those countries who preach and call others to stick to principles，respect the UN Charter and to comply with the decisions of its organs and bodies. إذن ما هي وضعك الآن؟ الoorاية الحقيقية اليوم هي ل those countries who watched the ongoing massacres and the genocide in Gaza for almost a year and witnessed the systematic destruction and dehumanization conducted by an apartheid regime for decades. إذن ما هي وضعك الآن؟ من الجانب التاريخي سينتهي؟ ماذا سيقول الكتابات التاريخية عنك؟ ماذا سينتهي بك الناس إذا كنت تختار ل反对 هذا القرار أو حتى توقف؟ ماذا سينستخدم excuse ل justification هذا القرار؟ إذا لم تتمكن من التصويت على السلام والعدل وagainst occupation and illegal settlements؟ كيف ستنجح على طلب الدعم إذا في يومك تمت الالعابية؟ كيف سينشرح إذا كان حكومتك تدعم بطريقة ما الالعابية في violation of international law and not hold those who do so accountable؟ وماذا سينقول ل those who will aim at you and say، وداعا إلى العالم من التقييمين المزدوجين؟ وتحدث عن التقييمين المزدوجين. قبل فترة قليلة، سمعنا الممثلة المميزة للقوة الفلسطينية التي تحرّركم جميعًا، كما فعله معه و predecessorsه، ترفيه حفلة و 教育نا و تعلّمنا عن إنسانية و مورالية. تمامًا، غير متمكّن من الحقيقة. حتى اليوم، لم يكن له أي justification nor تحدث عن الموضوع الذي نناقشه، الالعابية القانونية. لم يكن له تأكيد على القرار وحاول أن يظهر أن العالم بدأ فقط على يوم سبعة أكتوبر، تجاهل حقيقة التاريخ. حسنًا، إذا كان يعتبر هذا مجلس الإدارة حفلة، ماذا؟ أعتبره مخاوف ترفيه في هذا المكان، دائمًا يجلب أسلوبه، تحاول أن يرفيح حفلة، يفشل في إيجادنا نفسي، يخاطرنا من الحقيقة. هذا ما يحاولون القيام به، لكنهم يفشلون بشكل كبير. إذن عندما أسأله إذا كان يعتقد هذا المكان هو حفلة، لماذا ترفيه فيه؟ لماذا لا تزال مشاركًا فيه؟ يا رفاق، الوقت للقيام بالعمل وليس بالكلمات. سيعمر عامًا و will pass and the massacres and genocide in Gaza and the West Bank is continuing. ال inability of the international community especially the Security Council to stop these atrocities and reach a ceasefire and the silence of many of you is what allowed the killing of tens of thousands, injuring hundreds of thousands, displacement of almost two million, the spread of famine and diseases. إذن اليوم، افعلوا بعض العدل لthose innocent and vote in favor of this resolution which would be a message from the world to the occupying forces and who support them blindly. Say enough is enough and it's time to act. الليبيا تأثّر عن وضعها بأنها لن تحدد resistance against occupation as terrorism and who from your countries didn't gain their independence without resistance especially when the doors of peaceful solutions are completely shut down. الليبيا تأثّر عن وضعها بأن единствى الحل السليم لهذا سبعة decades of aggression and occupation is by recognizing the Palestinians' right to defend themselves and resist occupation and the right of self-determination and having an independent state with Jerusalem its capital. في النهاية، الوقت الآن لجميعنا لتأكيد واعتبار النتائج من ICJ. هذا الكال الذي نعرفه جميعًا تم إنشاؤه أو تم إنشاؤه لمساعدة في ضمان السلام والعدل حيث يجب أن ي prevail القانون الدولي على استخدام القوة. لذلك ندعوكم جميعًا إلى التصويت على هذا القرار لتنظيم الطريق للسلام. سينذكر التاريخ those countries who which had taken a principle, a moral, a legal or humane stance and it will also remember those who had their humanity in deep coma and were aware and deliberately participated in this live broadcasted atrocity especially the 21st century Holocaust, the Holocaust of Gaza. التصويت على هذا القرار اليوم هو تصويت للسلام و هو تصويت للعدل. شكرًا لك.
أنا أشكر الممثلة المميزة للليبيا. الآن أعطي ال席ة للممثلة المميزة للجوردن.
سيدي الرئيس، بدايةً أتقدم منكم بالتهنية على انتخابكم رئيسا للجمعية العامة للام المتحدة بدورتها التاسعة والسبعين. وأشكركم على استجابتكم لطلب استئناف مجلس الاستثنائية الطريقة العاشرة للجمعية العامة للام المتحدة وتحدّون من أجل السلام. ويعرض الأردن عن دعمه لبيانات المجموعة العربية ومنظمة التعامل الإسلامية وحركة عدم الانحياز. السيد الرئيس، يأتي عقد جلستنا اليوم للنظر في مشروع القرار الذي قدمه الوفود الفلسطيني الشقيق في طوء الرأي الاستشاري لمحكمة العدل الدولية والذي صدر في تموز الفائض بشأن التبعات القانونية الناشئة عن سياسات ومارسات إسرائيل في الأرض الفلسطينية المحتلة بما في ذلك القدس الشرقيّة. وذلك استجابة لطلب الجمعية العامة للام المتحدة أواخر العام 2022. ويعرض الأردن عن دعمه الكامل للمشروع الفلسطيني وندعو الدول الأعضاء للتصويت لصالحه. السيد الرئيس، يعتبر الأردن الرأي الاستشاري الصادر عن المحكمة مفسلا تاريخيا في القضية الفلسطينية حيث أكد ما كنا جميعا ندركه من العقود وهو أن الاحتلال الإسرائيلي غير قانوني وأن وجود مستوطناتها ومستوطنيها في الأرض الفلسطينية المحتلة غير شرعي وباطل وأن ممارساتها بحق الشعب الفلسطيني الرازح تحت الاحتلال هي ممارسات عنصرية في المقام الأول ترتكى للتمييز العنصري والأپارتيد. السيد الرئيس، إن انفاذ ما ورد في الرأي الاستشاري للمحكمة هو واجب علينا كدول ومنظمات دولية ومجتمع دولي لأنما أعلنته المحكمة في هذا الرأي يعكس موقف القانون الدولي من القضية الفلسطينية والاحتلال الإسرائيلي وحق تقرير المصير الفلسطيني ومن الخروقات الإسرائيلية الجسيمة للقواعد الآمرة في القانون الدولي. وسنشهد في المستقبل القريب كيف سينعكس مضمون الرأي الاستشاري على الإجراءات القضاءية التي سيتم اتخاذها في المحاكم الوطنية والأقليمية والدولية ضد الاحتلال والممارسات الإسرائيلية. وتماشيا مع الرأي الاستشاري والمرافعة التي قدمها الأردن أمام المحكمة لا يسعنا إلا أن نجدد تأكيدنا على أن السياسات الإسرائيلية في الأرض الفلسطينية المحتلة قد سعت إلى إجهاد حق الشعب الفلسطيني في تحقيق مصيره وهو ما لا يمكن للمجتمع الدولي أن يسمح به. ونشدّد هنا على ضرورة إلزام إسرائيل بتطبيق ما تضمنه الرأي الاستشاري بهذا الخصوص بما في ذلك إنهاء الاحتلال الإسرائيلي المستمر منذ حزيران الف تسعمية سبع وستين بأسرع وقت ممكن والوقف الفوري لجميع الأنشطة الإستيطانية وإجلاة المستوطنيها من الأرض الفلسطينية المحتلة ووقف إجراءاتها التعسفية والقمعية تجاه الشعب الفلسطيني في أرضه المحتلة. السيد الرئيس، نجدد دعمنا المطلق لرأي المحكمة الذي ألزم إسرائيل أيضا بعادة الممتلكات لأصحابها الشرعيين وايضا تقديم تعويضات للمتدررين من سياسات إسرائيل ومارساتها في الأرض الفلسطينية المحتلة. وندعم الإجراءات التي أدرجها مشروع القرار الفلسطيني من وقف استيراد وشراء المنتجات المصنعة في المستوطنات أو توريد السلاح إلى إسرائيل أو استيرادها استيراده منها. فضلًا عن تأكيد مشروع القرار لأهمية اتخاذ كافة الإجراءات لوقف الانتهاء كاتل هادفة إلى تغيير الوضع التاريخي القائم للأماكن المقدسة في القدس. إن عدم تقديم الدعم لإسرائيل للاستمرار بجرائمها وخروقاتها بحق الشعب الفلسطيني ليس طرفا فكريا وإنما واجب قانوني على كل دولة وعلى المجتمع الدولي ككل تنفيذه. من يدعم المستوطنات عليه أن يتوقف. من تقوم شركاته شركاته بتغذية آلة القتلى والعنف الإسرائيلي ضد الشعب الفلسطيني عليه أن يجبرها على التوقف عن ذلك وأن يؤيد إجراءات إسرائيل لخلق واقع جديد على الأرض ضد فلسطين عليه أن يعي أن ذلك مصيره الفشل لا محالة. السيد الرئيس، في طوء تأكيد الرأي الاستشاري للمحكمة على واحدة الأرض الفلسطينية وحق الفلسطينيين بالعودة. and the Palestinian people's recovery and his refusal to blame the Palestinian we all have to work on with all the legal measures available through the obligatory national projects and the foreign and the collective obligations to achieve this. As we must do to strengthen the international pressure on Israel to stop the vicious occupation against the Palestinian people in Gaza which has seen thousands of Palestinians since the barbarian and the illegal war in the past years. And I am here to emphasize the need of the international and the international society on Israel to stop the war in a momentary and to provide humanitarian assistance to the countries in a comprehensive and systematic way and to stop the abuse of the state and the stateless institutions and apply the decisions of the international and the national courts and the final decision, 27/35. As I said, the international society is calling for a single and continuing the Israeli occupation and their actions to change the historical situation in the faith and to stop Israel and its stateless governments from stopping the wars in the northern region and their rams to the continent and to a complete national war that does not bear any responsibility. At the end, the president has made a request for the Israeli history and the history to stop the Palestinian people and to stop the stateless and the stateless from the 4th of July 1967 and the faith of the eastern territory according to the decisions of the national courts and based on the two states' a single way to achieve the complete peace and I am here to emphasize that Israel should to change the historical situation in the faith and its Islamic and Muslim faith in the history of the faith. Thank you, the president.
I thank the distinguished representative of Jordan and I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Algeria.
Mr. President, we gather today to discuss the question of Palestine, a stark reminder of the importance of multilateral action, but at the same time, a proof of the limits of its frameworks, including these very United Nations. On the one hand, without the international law, without the global fora of nation, the Palestinian cause would have faded into oblivion in a world dominated by narrow interests. On the other hand, multilateral action has shown its limitation despite the consensus of the international community and the successive binding resolution, resolution that plainly affirm and reaffirm the Palestinian rights to self-determination, Palestinian right to their land, Palestinian right to their statehood. Yes, we find ourselves unable to enforce them. These failures stem from an occupying power that disregards international law and drives on impunity, acting as though it is above the law. In Gaza, in the West Bank, the Israeli occupiers continue to kill, continue to arrest with the toll of victims surpassing in nearly one year 41,000 martyrs, almost 100,000 wounded and more than 1,000, 10,000 Palestinian detainees. The Israeli occupying power, the secret creates homicides of al-Qudsha Sharif and forcibly displays its people. Just this morning, we witnessed another assault from Israeli settlers protected by the Israeli police into the mosque of Al-Aqsa. The occupying power openly denies the right of the Palestinian people and seeks to undermine the establishment of their states. Mr. President, in light of this bleak reality which threatens to extinguish hope, extinguish hope in the heart of the Palestinians and peace lovers around the world, the advisory opinion of the International Court of Justice came. This historic and comprehensive decision by the highest judicial body in the world challenges the Israeli occupation narrative and exposes its apartheid policies. It reaffirms the illegality of Israel occupation of Palestinian territories and the need to its end. Now, as President Abdul Najib Taboun has emphasized and I quote, "We, the advocates of the just peace, bear the responsibility to end the historic injustice inflicted on the Palestinian people, an outcome achievable only by compelling, only by compelling the occupying power to comply with international law." End of quote. Mr. President, the voice of justice has spoken and it is imperative that we shall all abide by its ruling. Failing to do so will disrupt the very foundations of the international order. We should ensure the full implementation of the ICJ advisory opinion. For this purpose, the State of Palestine submitted to the General Assembly this historic draft resolution and this draft is historic in its significance as it is the first resolution submitted by the State of Palestine in its national capacity in the history of the United Nations. It is another victory on the path to full membership to the United Nations. It is also historic in its content as it outlines a roadmap to end the occupation and enable the Palestinian people to fully enjoy their rights. My country, Algeria, having always stood by Palestine, promptly sponsored this draft resolution and called on all members to support it, to vote in favor of it. Today, we must be united in our support, in our solidarity with the Palestinian people. We must stand together in defense of international law. We must stand united for peace. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Algeria and I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the United States.
The President, the United States has worked with determination to support a comprehensive peace agreement that would permanently resolve the Israeli-Palestinian conflict. There is no other path that both guarantees Israel's security and future as a democratic Jewish state and ensures Palestinians can live in peace and dignity in the state of their own. Consistent with this position, we have long opposed unilateral measures that undermine the prospect of a two-state solution. That includes the advancement of Israeli settlements in the West Bank and it includes the resolution that the Palestinian delegation has put before us today. For the better part of four decades, the United States has been clear about our policy concerns with Israel's program of settlements. Earlier this year, we also expressed the view that the program of settlements is inconsistent with international law. We maintain firm opposition to settlement expansion which in our judgment only weakens Israel's security. The United States also respects the important role of the International Court of Justice in advising the UN General Assembly and in helping peacefully settle disputes. However, adoption of a one-sided resolution that selectively interprets the substance of the ICJ's opinion does not advance what we all want to see and that is progress toward two states living in peace side by side. This proposed resolution advances the flawed and indeed false idea that adopting a text here in New York can somehow resolve what is easily one of the most complex and persistent diplomatic challenges of our time. Colleagues, we all know that is not true. We all know, as the Security Council has repeatedly underscored, that a resolution of the Israeli-Palestinian conflict must be achieved through negotiations between the two parties. Negotiations grounded in some basic principles, including the notion of land for peace. Regrettably, but very significantly, the Palestinian resolution makes no mention of this reality. It also fails to acknowledge, among other things, that Hamas, a terrorist organization, is currently exerting power, control and influence in Gaza and it refuses to address the reality that Israel, a United Nations member state, simply has a right to protect and defend its people from acts of terror or violence. I understand the last few months have been devastating for the Palestinian people. Families have endured hell in Gaza and the West Bank due to the new round of fighting Hamas set in motion on October 7th. But the resolution put forward by the Palestinian delegation does nothing to end the current conflict with Hamas in Gaza, nothing to bring the hostages home to their families and nothing to surge lifesaving assistance to Palestinian civilians in Gaza. It does not offer a concrete path forward for how consistent with Security Council Resolution 273035, the Palestinian Authority in Gaza intends to reunify the Gaza Strip with the West Bank. It does not address calls for reform of the Palestinian Authority, not only from the international community, including numerous Arab states, but also from the Palestinian people. And despite the fact that Hamas just upended ceasefire negotiations by brutally murdering six hostages and despite the fact that Hamas continues to use Palestinian civilians as human shields in Gaza, this resolution does not include any measures to pressure Hamas to heed Security Council Resolution 2735, accept the deal on the table and implement it without delay or further conditions. Colleagues, using inflammatory language in this text is not going to advance the cause of peace. Demanding every member state impose economic sanctions on Israel and its officials is not going to reinvigorate the peace process, let alone create a path toward a two-state solution. Creating more special committees and convening a conference ostensibly for no other purpose than to pressure Israel is not a viable substitute for the one thing we all know and that is the Security Council and General Assembly have long agreed is necessary to resolve the Israeli-Palestinian conflict and that is direct negotiations. Rather, and much like other symbolic gestures pursued by the Palestinian delegation in recent months, many of which do little or nothing to alleviate the suffering of the Palestinian civilians in Gaza, this resolution is a stark reminder that there are no shortcuts to peace. Colleagues, in the dark months since October 7th, I've heard and sensed a feeling of hopelessness regarding the prospects for peace, not only between Israeli and Palestinians but more broadly in the region. But we must not be guided by fear and despair. We know what needs to be done to achieve peace starting with an immediate ceasefire with hostage release based on the principles of Security Council Resolution 2735. Forward our hope offered through this resolution today. Its adoption will not save Palestinian lives, bring the hostages home, end Israeli settlements or reinvigorate the peace process. For that reason, I urge you to vote no and to instead join the United States in pressing both parties, Israelis and Palestinians, to recommit to the hard work of direct negotiations and to press Hamas to take the deal on the table. Thank you very much and thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of the United States and I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Saudi Arabia.
In the name of Allah, the Most Gracious, the President, the ladies and gentlemen, I would like to introduce the president of the International Committee for the United Nations and the Saudi Arabian Union and the Cameroon and the Islamic Movement and Uganda and the United Nations for the Stop the Punishment movement. I would like to introduce بداية ودأه نهنة رئيس الجماعية العامة ونوابه للدوره التاسعة وسبعين متمينا لهم التوفيق والنجاح كما نشكرهم على استثناء الدورة الاستثنائية الطارئة العاشرة للجمعية العامة لمتابعة فتوة محكمة العدل الدولية بشيء الآثار القانونية الناشئ عن سياسات اسرائيل وممارساتها في الأراضي الفلسطينية المحتلة بما فيها القدس الشرقي وعن عدم شرعية استمرار وجود اسرائيل في الأراضي الفلسطينية المحتلة حيث أفتت محكمة العدل الدولية ب تاريخ التاسعة عشر من شهر إبريل الماضي بأن استمرار وجود اسرائيل في الأراضي الفلسطينية المحتلة غير قانوني يجب انهاءه ويجب معالجة ما نشاء عنه من انشطة استطانية كما رأت المحكمة أن اسرائيل منزمة بالتعويض عن الأضرار الناتجة وأن المنظمات الدولية بما فيها الأمم المتحدة منزمة بعدم اعتراف بشرعية الوضع الناشئ عن هذا الوجود غير القانوني حيث جاءت الفتوة بناء على طلب الجماعية العامة بقررها رقم 77 تقسيم 247 ب تاريخ 30 دسمبر 2022 السيد الرئيس لقد رحبت بلادي بالرأي الاستشاري الصادري عن محكمة العدل الدولية بشيء سياسات وممارسات اسرائيل وتأكدها على عدم قانونية الوجود الاسرائيلي على الأراضي الفلسطينية المحتلة السيد الرئيس، السيدات والسادة إن حظ السلم والأمن الدوليين يأتي في مقدمة مهام هذه المنظمة واليوم يظهر لنا جليا تأخر المنظمة تارة وعدزها تارة أخرى عن القيام بالدور مناطبها حيث أن تأخرها في التوصل لحل عادل وشامل لقضية الفلسطينية سبب مأساة إنسانية على مدى عقود مضت وعفض للتداعيات المأساوية التي نشهدها اليوم حيث تمارس اسرائيل القوة القائمة بالاحتلال جميع أشكال الجرائم بحق الشعب الفلسطيني غير آبهة بقرارات شرعية الدولية والقانون الدولي والقانون الدولي الإنساني حتى تولدت لديها القناعة بأنها فوق تلك القرارات والقوانين وأنها تمتلك حصانة تحميها من المسائل والمحاسبة مما دفأهل التمادي بسياسةاتها البدوانية الوحشية والإمعان بكافة أنواع الجرائم والاجراءات التي تهدف لطمس الحق الفلسطيني السيد الرئيس لقد جاءت فتوة محكمة العدل الدولية متسقة مع ما يؤمن به المجتمع الدولي تجاه الحق الفلسطيني ومؤكدة على أن الممارسات الاسرائيلية غير القانونية المتدت عبر عقود من الزمن أدت ولا زالت تؤدي إلى تفاقم الانتهاكات بحق الشعب الفلسطيني وعليه نطلع جميعا لمتابعة فورية في ضوء هذه الفتوة لمعالجة هذا الظلم التاريخي الذي طال أمه إن المجتمع الدولي مثلا في الجماعية العامة الأمم المتحدة مطالب بأن يقر بضرورة احترام هذا الرأي بل ومطالب أيضا بأن يراقب فيد ما تضمنه من ارتزامات على الجانب الاسرائيلي حيث أن التفعيل الحقيقي الذي نشده جميعا ونصب إليه لدور الأمم المتحدة لا بد أن يبدأ باحترام قراراتها وتعزيز دور أجهزتها وختاما السيد الرئيس تتطلع المملكة العربية السعودية إلى اعتماد مشروع القرار المقدم اليوم وتدعو الدول الاعضاء المحبة للسلام، للتصويت، لصالحه كونه يعيد التأكيد على احترام المجتمع الدولي لرأي محكمة العدل الدولية ويهدف إلى تأكيد الحق الفلسطيني المنهوب ويؤسس لمرحلة تخضي إلى السلام كما توكد المملكة العربية السعودية على ضرورة القيام بخطوات عملية وذات مصداقية للوصول إلى حل عادل وشامل لقضية الفلسطينية وفقا لمبادرة السلام العربية وقرارات الشرعية الدولية بما يكفل للشعب الفلسطيني الشقيق حقه الأصل في تقرير مصيره وإقامة دولته المستقلة على حدود 1967 وعاصمتها القدس الشرقي وشكرا السيد الرئيس.
أنا أشكر الممثل المميز للسعودية وأعطي الآن السرعة للممثل المميز للنوروي.
مسied الرئيس، شرعية الاستشارية لـ 19 جولاي من حكمة العدل الدولية هي قيادة مهمة جدا من منظمة المحكمة القانونية الرئيسية لل聯盟 رسالة حكمة العدلية لم تكن واضحة وجود اسرائيل في领土占領地区 يشكل ا act مخطئ من نوع متواصل هذا تم تحدثه من خلال انتهاك اسرائيل عن قانون التحصيل على领土 من خلال القوة والحق في自主決定 على ذلك الحد، حكمة العدلية تقول ان اسرائيل يجب أن تؤدي نهاية هذا الوجود غير قانوني بسرعة يمكن حكمة العدلية تؤكد أيضا ان اسرائيل في اقتصادها تviolate国际法律 وتعمل على ذلك، اسرائيل يجب على الفور توقف جميع اقتصادها وانهاء جميع定居者 من领土占領 وحالة جميع القوانين وال跡象 لخلق أو مالك الوضع غير قانوني وتقديم تعويض كامل لجميع الPalestinians هذا هو رسالة غير محددة يجب على اسرائيل تتمكين بها بدون تفويض حكمة العدلية تشير أكثر على أن جميع الدول الأخرى يجب أن لا تساعد في مالك الوضع غير قانوني الذي صنعه اسرائيل تطلب من總會議和安全部考慮措施 لمساعدة تؤدي الوجود غير قانوني هذا يضع مسؤولية على جميعنا اتخاذ قرار على استfulice ICJ 的建議意見將被投票 它與判決意見一致，旨在保證 latter被維持 نوروي ست投票赞成 ونحن نشجع الجميع على فعل ذلك الاحترام للقانون international هو مطلوب لحفاظ على和平和安全 مسied الرئيس، نظر إلى الوضع المسرحي على الأرض نوروي يدعو لوقف立即 و解除所有 remaining hostages الذين يبقون في حفرة بعد اتراك هماز في الاتقاط على 7 أكتوبر الذي نحن قد نكره في أوقات قوية بعد أكثر من 11 أشهر الحرب، الوضع في عازا مأسوس نطاق التدمير، عدد الكثيرون المخاطر واحتياجات humanitaria غير precedente الحزب المحيط الذي يمر بمروره civilians في عازا كل يوم يحدث على ما نعلم لا يمكن لأي شخص أن يقول أننا لا نفهم مدى القتال والدمير المستمر لكننا لم نتمكن من prevention هذا غير معذل في البحيرة الوسطى المحتلة، الوضع السريع بشكل كبير وربما له تأثيرات كبيرة لregion على الذهاب إلى حرب عالمي الوضع الاقتصادي القريب، اجراءات عالمية اسرائيلية قريبة وقتال定居者 غير متأخر يستمر في تأثير أضرار عصيبة على الشعب palestinian وجميعهم يساهمون في تزايد وضع قارب مسied الرئيس،中国人民有自主決定的权利 كما تؤكد حكمة العدلية حكمة العدلية تقول اسرائيل يجب أن تؤدي الوجود غير قانوني هذا يشمل الحق في اقتصادا مستقل وحري على كلي领土占領 اسرائيل في اقتصادها المستقل ووجودها غير قانوني لا مكتمل مع تحقيق اقتصاد palestinian قوي وأخيرا، حل اقتصادين لا يوجد طريقة لتقديم سicherة لجميع palestinians وisraelis بدون تأسيس اقتصاد palestinian حل اقتصادين يتطلب اقتصادا اسرائيلي وPalestinian تأكيد نوروي لوضع palestine تؤكد تأكيد نوروي على حل اقتصادين من خلال تأسيس اقتصاد palestine حري، ديمocratic وحري ومستقر يعيشون معا مع اقتصاد اسرائيل في和平 وداخل حدود حري وتشكّر من خلال هذا التأكيد، نوروي تؤكد دعم leadership palestinian الذي يدعم حل اقتصادين، دبلوميسيا وابستن من القتال في محاولة تحقيق和平 نوروي ترى أن majority من كل اقتصاد يدعم حل اقتصادين دعونا نcommit أيضا لأخذ خطوات مثالية وغير م挽回 هذا أكثر ارجل من أي وقت مضى مسied الرئيس، الطرق الحالية غير مستقرة احتمال اتجاه ارجل محتاج حكمة العدلية تقدم خطة لتعوض الوضع هذا ي deserve كل اهتمامنا وانا اشكرك
أنا أشكر الممثل المميز للنوروي لقد سمعنا الم发言 الأخير في المناقشة حول هذا الموضوع لهذا الاجتماع سنسمع المتحدث المتبقيين هذا вечер في الساعة 3 مساء في هذا المكتب هذا الاجتماع محدد